All right, welcome everybody to the July meeting of the Olathe School District. And we will start off with a roll call, Joy.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McCune?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
You all join me in the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, thank you all for being here. I do want to kick this off by welcoming our new superintendent, John Allison. Very excited to be able to have him sit up here with us and kick off his new school year and get things going. And so, it's been a long two-year process of getting things going and getting where we're at today, but very excited about it. So, very welcome, John.
Thank you.
Excited about what we've got coming forward and what we're going to be able to do over the next lots and lots of years, I hope.
So do I.
All right, so the first order of business is electing the new officers for the school board. And so, to kick this off, for the president of the, for the new president of the board, I would like to open up nominations for the board president.
I would like to nominate Brent McCune as board president.
Second.
Okay. So then I need a motion to cease nominations, please.
So moved.
Joy, I have a motion by Mr. Wickliffe, a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Switched on me. That's right. Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
And then as my last act of president, I look for a motion to elect a president.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Martin, and a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
A hearty yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear? Mr. Shear?
You are newly elected, about that. All right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity. I don't want to let anybody down, but I would like to say a couple of words before we do get started. I know when I started in 2013, it was customary to have a president serve one year and the vice president kind of step in, and the next year you just kind of move on and move ahead. July is pretty much a routine meeting, electing officers. But last year, in 2016, as you know, we were looking for a new superintendent. We had a lot of decisions to make. As a board, we decided to have a little continuity, so to continue Rick's year, we had, or I'd made that nomination so that Rick could continue as the board president. I was really eager when Mr. Wickliffe ceased nominations that Rick would be voted in then as president, and he did a really an outstanding job. His leadership, his communication with the community and the staff and all the board members, he did an amazing job, and I really appreciate that as a board member because his leadership was just outstanding. So again, Rick, I want to say thank you for your two years of leadership, and I hope we go back maybe to a one-year rotation, maybe a two-year rotation, but we'll see. But on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to present this to you as well.
Very nice.
There you go. Thank you. We look forward to having him continue to serve on the Board of Education and support education here in Olathe, and just like he's always done. So, let's proceed. 1.04, election of the 2017-18 Board Vice President. I'd like to open up the board here to nominations.
I'd like to nominate Shannon Wickliffe.
Second.
Okay. This is two actions, so...
There's no other nominations, you need one to cease nominating.
I move to cease nominations.
Second.
We have a motion by Amy Martin, and a second by the other Felter.
Roll, please.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
And the second motion of action, we need a nomination for Mr. Wickliffe.
I move to elect Shannon Wickliffe as the 2017-18 Board of Education Vice President.
Yes.
Second.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
We have a motion by Ms. Martin, and a second by Mr. Shear.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin? Yes.
Gosh, normally we, again, July being a routine meeting, we hear about budget, but
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
in this meeting, we're going to wait and talk about budget under the superintendent comments.
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
So moving to the action and consent agenda, many of these items are simply routine.
Yes.
1.05, appoint the 2017-18 clerk, deputy clerk, and treasurer. Is there any item that anybody would like to pull? And I do have one. Looking for a motion.
And I have one as well.
I move to appoint Joy Bondren, clerk; Barbara Bame, deputy clerk; Merle Hastert,
When we get to 3.11, approval of investment institutions for the fiscal year 2017-2018,
treasurer of the Board of Education for 2017-2018.
I'm going to recuse myself because First National Bank, my employer, is on that list.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin, a second by Mr. Wickliffe. Okay, thank you. And I would like to hear more about 3.06, social emotional learning, and I believe Dr.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Dane, is it, or Dugan?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Dr. Dugan.
Mr. McCune?
Dugan.
Yes.
It's Ugan.
Mrs. Martin?
You.
Yes.
You, yes.
And did I, I said Barbara's name wrong, didn't I?
Can I have John do it?
It's Bame.
Bame.
I said Bame.
That would be emotional.
I apologize.
So noted. 1.06, appoint to 2017-18 school attorney.
How about I give you a little overview of what this item is and why we're incredibly
I'd move to appoint Mr. Michael T. Norris of Norris &amp; Kepplinger, LLC, as the 2017-2018
excited about it? And I have just a brief, if I can get to it, a slide for Ron.
school attorney.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wickliffe, and a second by Ms. Felter.
Roll, please.
Mr. Wickliffe?
So tonight, as a recommendation from the staff looking for action from the Board of
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Education, is two items that are certainly related to each other and then related to our larger social, emotional, mental health initiatives we've been working on for the last couple of years. I'm going to pull up, I hope, something that looks like that model for you. Before you is the middle school, 6, 7, and 8 curriculum for second step, which is our social, emotional learning curriculum, and part of the required state standard we're meeting, and we're incredibly excited about it. Let's go back. Then the second item tied with that is that assessment tool. So if we implement a curriculum, how are we going to monitor that? How do we know some of these would appear to be softer skills, grit, and resiliency, and perseverance? We want to implement, we love this curriculum, it's rigorous, it's reliable, it's valid, but how do we know how our kids are doing and learning from it? And so, with this, we are also recommending this assessment tool under a company called Panorama. It's specifically tied to the second step curriculum. So I wanted to point out a couple of things, and then I'll answer any individual questions for you. It's been a little while, but not too far back, we talked about this comprehensive look as a school district, about how we need to be addressing the social, emotional wellness, mental health of our students. We wanted strong families and strong partnerships, and that was going to make for really strong schools. Let me highlight a couple of things that are happening recently that include this action item tonight. These arrows, and I know that's small for the audience, and I apologize. One is we did a summer conference that we always do, and we've celebrated, it was incredibly successful. We continue to train lots and lots of folks about mental health and social, emotional, and anxiety, and strategies and intervention. That's an ongoing process, and that's that first arrow at the top there. The second piece is we continue to address, do we have the right people? Are we engaging and training the right folks in terms of providing specialized services to the students? And this is just incredibly lucky, and I mentioned just a few. We have 75 school counselors in Olathe, serving our kids in their mental health and social needs. We have 20 social workers, focused mainly on our students with disabilities, but provide interventions for those students that show any of that. 32 school psychologists, somewhere in the area of 60 school nurses who often have that same type of mental health, social, emotional radar going on for kids that show up in a nurse's office and complain of a variety of ailments. Then you'll see the next arrow is addressing tonight's piece. We want curriculum, we want to provide all students with a curriculum that starts to address these things. This curriculum starts at the early childhood level, and it's providing amazing topics. I'm going to show you those. And then, last month, you approved the elementary version of this, so tonight is that 6th, 7th, 8th grade. And then in addition, this assessment tool is early childhood through grade 12, because we're also going to assess how our high school students are doing in certain areas, so we know what interventions we need to add to the many things we're doing at the high school level in terms of this. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, we continue with our community partnerships, and I think we're a unique community with the outpouring of partnerships and support we have for our mental health therapists in each of our high schools, one of our middle schools. Friends University has family therapy interns in our elementary schools. And a brief shout-out to Friends University, this summer provided free mental health family therapy at Prairie Learning Center to any student in the district and their family, and any of our employees and their families. They were booked solid. We ran it out of Prairie Learning Center because we had administrator on duty during that time. It was incredibly well-received, and we received the benefits of that starting the first day of school. We have kids with some strategies and families feeling better. So, we're thrilled, and that partnership is really unique to us, and we'll hopefully double that next summer and keep building on that. Very quickly, curriculum, just to give you a flavor, people are like, what's curriculum look like addressing social, emotional, mental health truly? I took some examples from early childhood straight through the 8th grade, how you do a little self-talk and calm yourself down, how do we identify feelings, anger, disappointment, how do we think of solutions, how do we problem-solve, getting at those skills that will help students when struggles happen, that we front-load them with all those prevention pieces, so that when tough things happen, and they will, that they've got those skills and they know how to talk about them, and it's language they're familiar with. The lessons are short, and they're teacher-friendly, because regular classroom teachers are delivering this curriculum. So then all our teachers in whole schools engage in this discussion that we really think is going to make a difference, and the research really supports that. You'll see things up by 8th grade that we're talking about bullying, and we're talking about substance abuse, complex feelings, how to ask for help, those kind of pieces. So that curriculum builds just a skill set that continues to have our students prepared for things that might come up, whether school or family-based or community-based. And then I can't be more excited about this assessment tool, because none of this really works unless we're monitoring it. So, two quick examples, obviously these aren't ours, but this is a student, and this is an example of their two 15-minute student surveys and a teacher's survey, so they don't take a lot of time. We're not putting our kids and staff through long assessment trials, but they get a ranking in how they norm both in their school, in their grade level, and nationally on these measures. This one's particularly emotional regulation, grit, growth mindset. And then it gives them strategies, and these can be conversations with kids and parents in the classroom, and really guide how we deliver this curriculum. And then teachers, and it's a very simple system, they can go on and pick up their whole class and can see where they might need to do a booster session on grit, because they have a couple of kids or a lot of kids, and it really allows us to watch this growth year to year, and then we'll have it for all grades. So this would be something that will become part of our culture and conversation, that this is important to us, so we measure it, and we can make change and improve some pieces. So with that very brief overview, but incredible excitement about really adding to what we've been doing for a number of years, I take any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Will parents be able to see this at conferences?
I absolutely hope so, right? So, and because I think it's great information. Now, we have to do some training with our parents and get them comfortable, and you're talking about feelings and some of these pieces, but that's going to be part of as we roll this out. We're going to roll it out slowly, get folks comfortable, make sure we do lots of good communication, both with the elementary and the middle school, and especially the assessment tools. So we're going to get school up and running, and then spend some time getting good information out. But I would see it at parent-teacher conferences, if you have a student and we're targeting some interventions, they really are going to need some help with emotional regulation. Parents would be involved in that conversation. We finally have some data that says, hey, I think we need to do something different than maybe what we've been doing. So I would hope it'd be used in all sorts of things.
I'm so excited about this, and it really almost feels like it's just kind of formalizing a lot of what we're doing already, would you say, and adding to assessment piece, just kind of a documentation process and really intentional curriculum structure, because we've done Rachel's Challenge, we've done anti-bullying, we've had counseling efforts on all sorts of the items listed. And then it also looks like it overlaps really nicely with the Kansas and the softer skill sets that we were hearing from our employers, and, you know, self-regulation is huge. If you're a hothead at the office, you're not going to be employed very long. So, this is very exciting, and it starts early and goes the whole way through. So thank you for being so intentional.
Absolutely. It really formalizes, right? If you want to make change, you have to measure it and track it and have data, and for a database district, and so it makes sense to formalize this, which seems softer and more qualitative with some quantifiable results.
Great, thank you for that report. So I would, unless there's anything else, anybody else would like to pull on this agenda item, the action consent agenda? Look for an...
Wait a minute. We'll pull out 3.11. We don't really need to pull 3.06, you can, you just had some information on it, but we'll need to do 3.01 to 3.10 first, and then 3.12 to 3.16, so it'll have to be two, because we need, or just say exclude 3.11, then when we do that one, Mr. Wickliffe will have to leave the room.
You have to actually get up.
I will make a motion that we accept 3.01 to 3.10, and 3.12 to 3.16.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Shear, and a second by Ms. Felter.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Someone like to get our missing board member?
I think we're probably close enough to 6:30. It says approximately 6:30. If we want to go ahead and do public comments, I think that would be okay.
That would be fine.
Public comments. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access panel, and audio recorded as matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address.
Did we have anybody request that?
No.
Nope? Okay. Moving on. Action bids, contracts, and agreements. Looks like we have four items. Is there any, one that anyone would like to discuss or pull? Discussion?
I'd like to just bring up 4.03. Talk a little bit about the traffic signal agreement with the middle school number 10. John or John or Greg?
John.
Just wanted to bring up the fact of the collaboration between the school district and the city, okay? That, again, one of the biggest parts of this is that, you know, this is more of a collaboration effort in working with them, because this is a signal for us being able to put a school there. It's not a requirement, it's not a city street that we maintain, that we pay for, or anything else, but at the same time, if we didn't put the school there, they probably didn't need a traffic signal. Was that, is that a pretty good assessment?
Yes. That's a, that's a good assessment. You want more? There really isn't, following engineering practices and procedures, they go through a process that they call warranting. It's a study that determines mathematically whether a traffic signal is needed or not needed. Our traffic engineer from the school district and the traffic engineers from the city have determined that there's not a traffic signal required there, it may not be one required there for a decade, for vehicle versus vehicle traffic control. We did spend some time visiting, though, after the engineers were finished, we spent some time with Mr. Nate Baldwin, who's a senior manager in the engineering department, and I, and determined that there really is, though, at the intersection, a need for student-vehicle control. It's really not a vehicle-vehicle issue, this is a vehicle-pedestrian issue. More than half the students at Millbrook Elementary School cross that intersection using a school guard, using, looking at the potential attendance boundaries for middle school 10, an even larger number of middle school students will use that intersection, and it appeared to be an intersection that's difficult to control with just a crossing guard, the amount of vehicular traffic and the amount of pedestrian traffic. And especially when you consider after-school activities for middle school students who might be crossing that intersection without a crossing guard, the need for a controlled crosswalk became important. Now, that doesn't fit in the normal process of, this is a vehicle-vehicle traffic light, this is really a vehicle-pedestrian traffic light that's really driven by our two schools that are in that neighborhood, and the result seemed to be, the easiest way was that we both participate, we both share equally in providing safe pathways to school.
Other questions?
Greg, much better said than I did. That's very good. But it is under the safety and care and concern of the children.
It is. It is not that we were generating traffic that would slow down other traffic, it's the fact that we really have all of these students in this particular intersection that we saw as a safety hazard.
And Greg, it says the funding source was the 2016 bond. Did it come out of the dollars we had earmarked for that school, or did we have...
Right now, we're paying for it out of the budget for that school. Right now, we have enough project reserve in that school, after we bid everything, that we're paying for it out of that bond, out of that bond issue and the funding for the school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any other questions on any of these other items?
Since we're talking about collaboration with the city, it's important to point out our fine officers back there are part of the school resource officer agreement that we will sign tonight, and the city of Olathe collaborates with us to the tune of 50% of the cost. So we are grateful for your service, guys, and for our city for taking good care of us there, too.
Thank you. It's good to have you here. With that, I would entertain a motion for the action items.
I move to approve action items 4.01 through 4.04 as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin, and a second by Ms. Felter.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Action items other, 5.01, look for a motion for the 2017-18 regular meeting dates.
Move to adopt a resolution to establish 2017-2018 regular meeting dates, times, and locations for Kansas State.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Beveridge, and a second by Ms. Martin.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
And I have to say that it's really strange to hear Mr. Shear make motions.
Everybody just pause a second and let him kind of jump in. 5.03, this is two motions required on this, but the Kansas Association of School Board Representative Appointments. We have the Kansas Association of School Board Government Relations Network Representative, also the KASB Legislative Committee for 2017 through 2020. I have just completed my three years on the Legislative Committee, and also the KASB Board of Directors, Region 15 VP for 2017 through 20.
And I want to apologize for not getting this on the May agenda. I had some confusion with the, our terms, and when they started and when they ended, so that's why it's on this one instead of May, so my apologies.
That is okay.
I don't think anybody was questioning you.
No. No, I've served the Governmental Relations Network, because I'm there as an officer at KASB, I'm happy to continue doing that, but if anyone else wants to participate, I'd be more than happy to give that up. And then I'd also, I don't want to twist Mr. Shear's arm, but we really, KASB likes to have our vice president serve three-year terms, and I think you still have one more year left on...
No, it's, it was over, this term starts this year and goes for three years.
For another three.
So it starts this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there was, that was where the confusion came in, is when the term...
Are you sure about that?
Yeah, I talked to KASB about it.
I could have sworn that you were only two years. Okay. Well, you can serve two terms.
You can or can't?
He can, yeah. Yeah, KASB's rule is two consecutive three-year terms.
Okay.
And I would be happy to accept the nomination to the KASB Board.
So he's nominated himself, that's good.
No, I think he's...
That's good.
I just said yes.
And what about the KASB Legislative Committee, 2017 through 2020?
I would like to nominate Mr. Beveridge to sit on that.
I'm happy to do that. I wanted to just wait to see if anyone else was interested, but if not...
Very good.
Well, good, then I would need a motion to cease nominations.
Did we nominate Amy to do the, Mrs. Martin to do the other one? Okay.
I'd second.
I'm sorry, who did?
Who did the nomination?
I think Shear.
I did.
The motion.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shear, and a second by Ms. Martin?
Yeah, okay.
To cease nominations, correct?
To cease nominations, that is correct.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge? I had some confusion with the, our terms and when they started and when they ended. So that's why it's on this one instead of May. So my apologies.
That is okay.
I don't think anybody was questioning you. We're good.
No, I've served the Governmental Relations Network because I'm there as an officer at KASB. I'm happy to continue doing that, but if anyone else wants to participate, I'd be more than happy to give that up. And then I'd also, I don't want to twist Mr. Shear's arm, but we really, KASB likes to have our vice president serve three-year terms. I think you still have one more year left on.
No, it's, it was over, this term starts this year and goes for three years.
For another three.
So it starts this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there was, that was where the confusion came in, is when the term.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah, I talked to KASB about it.
I could have sworn that you were only two years. Okay. Well, you can serve two terms.
You can or?
He can, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, KASB's rule is two consecutive three-year terms.
Okay.
And I would be happy to accept the nomination to the KASB Board.
So he's nominating himself, that's good.
No, I think. I just said yes.
And what about the KASB Legislative Committee, 2017 through 2020?
I would like to nominate Mr. Beveridge to sit on.
I'm happy to do that. I wanted to just wait to see if anyone else was interested, but if not.
Very good.
Well, good, then I would need a motion to cease nominations.
Did we nominate Amy to do the, Mrs. Martin to do the other one? Okay.
I'd second.
I'm sorry, who did?
Who did the nomination? I think Shear.
I did.
The motion.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by?
Martin.
Ms. Martin?
Yeah.
To cease nominations, correct?
To cease nominations, that is correct.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Now this, action on motion number two.
So I, I move to appoint Amy Martin to serve as the 2017-2018 Kansas Association, the School Boards Governmental Relations Network Representative, also myself, Rick Shear to serve on the KASB, or excuse me, Joe Beveridge to serve on the KASB Legislative Committee for the 2017 to 2020, and to appoint myself, Rick Shear, to serve as the KASB Board of Directors, Regions 15 Vice President for 2017 to 2020.
Second?
So I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Mr. Whitcliff?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much for stepping up and filling those roles, very important roles for our district and the state as well. 5.04, the Kansas State Department of Education redesign application, and I believe Dr. Dane, you are up. This is something that we heard about earlier in the year, or at the end of the last school year, from Dr. Randy Watson. And if you'd fill us in?
Absolutely. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of both general administration and teaching and learning to talk a little bit about this and ask your approval tonight. We are very excited about the opportunity to place an application with the commissioner. To kind of backtrack, and Dr. Watson talked about this before, about 24 months ago, the commissioner and his new role started going around the state, asking all stakeholders, what does a successful 24-year-old Kansasans look like and what does this schooling look like to prepare that individual to be successful? And so in those community forums, those visions came forward of social emotional growth measured locally, which is one of the items that Dr. Dugan talked about just now, individual plan of study, kindergarten readiness, graduation rates, and then post-secondary success. And so now is the time, as those visions have been shared with the schools, he's calling to action seven school districts that would actually like to put that into play. And so we think the idea of being one of those school districts that actually gets to influence that change and be progressive and be a part of that would be really exciting. So in doing that, to, to be able to apply, two schools have to be able to have at least 80% or higher staff approval, one at the elementary level, one at the secondary level. And then we also need to have a board of education that's in favor of working through this. Now, we do know that this is a little bit of flying the plane and building it at the same time. We still have lots of questions that we want to work through and be answered, but the timeline right now is set that the application is due August 1st. And so that means we would need to ask your approval tonight if we do want to decide to move forward in that, so that we have that, we can have everything in place so that we can turn in our application on August 1st. So I would welcome any questions that you might have about that process.
I have a couple of questions. I noticed on the website that four schools, I guess statewide, have applied up to this point. Application to do August 1st, is there any guarantee that we'd be accepted?
No. Not yet.
And is there any right to withdraw if we are accepted?
That's one of the questions that we have right now, and I don't know, I know Mr. Allison has been trying to get ahold of Dr. Watson. I don't think we've been able to give an answer to that up till now unless Mr. Allison knows.
I can, I can give you an update. It is a little bit of a leap of faith, asking school boards to approve something that is still under creation at the state level. Honestly, the timeline that was established, I think could have been more appropriate, but it's the timeline that we're operating under. We would have the ability to withdraw our application, and I had a conversation right before the meeting, because my concern is, as, as we see and begin to work through this process, and if we were selected as one of those districts, if it doesn't align to our schools' needs or to what we need to do as a district, that we would not be continued to continue in that direction. And I've been assured that we would have the, the chance to assess that as we move forward. So I think at this point, we're showing interest with this approval. It allows us to continue through the process and then be able to, to evaluate as we move forward.
I was just going to ask, did you have another question? How specific does the application need to be? I mean, are we presenting ideas or just trying to get in this group and then the ideas come out?
So the application really is around those five tenants and what we maybe have in place right now, and additionally, what ideas we have for the future, being committed to the process, why we as a district would actually want to participate. The other really exciting thing about this is that the seven school districts that are chosen, after their redesign, then they become demonstration sites for the rest of the state. And so we were proud of our schools, we would love to open our doors and have other school districts across the state come loan from us. And so a lot of that, you know, we talk about our commitment, what we're willing to do, how the district staff is willing to participate and make sure this is successful, the principals, the school. I think a large part of having your approval and then also at least 80% of the staff approval is crucial. So we go through the process and how we came to those schools and all of that in the application.
I'm, I'm really excited about the prospect. I think that empowering our staff to make some changes that they think will be beneficial to students is really important, and as the board, we should be supporting our staff in that, not that we're not. I know that the State Department will provide us with some, some resources as far as mines, but are there any dollars attached to this?
We don't know that for certain. We, we, we think that possibly there could be, and Mr. Allison, you may have a little more.
If there are, it's going to be limited. KSDE's attempt is to, as we think about how we want schools in Kansas to, to look and act differently moving forward, that the redesign is successful if it doesn't require large investments. So it's really about utilizing current staff and structures and professional development and, and those types of things. So I think that's their, their goal. So what is guaranteed for those schools selected will be support from KSDE, some additional coaching and other opportunities that'll be available. And, and their intent is to tailor the support that a particular school would need based on, as we, as we think of the five tenants, which of those they select and what they're going to need to, to move forward. So it's, it's really, the, the, the design is around the individual needs of, of those schools that'll participate.
So Mr. Beveridge has to wait one more year for year-round school?
Any other questions for Dr.?
So Dr. Dane, so, so the five outcomes, okay? We work towards those already.
Absolutely.
And so it's not like it's going to be, as far as, as far as the direction that we're trying to get there.
Right.
But how we're going to get there, but we haven't designed that yet. And that, and, and even this program really hadn't designed what that looks like.
Right.
So it is, one side it's a little scary because we don't know what we're getting into, but the other side of this is, you know, as, as a school district, I mean, we, we're already stepping out above and beyond what a lot of school districts in Kansas, like, look at our new high school, okay? How we're going to teach and how we're going to learn and things such as that. So we're already looking at that and trying to be a little more innovative in what we're trying to do. Just your thoughts on this? So as we take some of the things that we're already doing, and again, being one of the largest school districts in the state, I assume that some of the other school districts that are out there could just adopt, adopt what we're doing today, and that would be innovative to them.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not going to be helpful to us, a, as far as changing. I mean, if that, if the fact of this is, is for us to change, I mean, just, I want to hear from you, how much change do you think we would have to do? I can see where there's a lot of other school districts that would be a huge change, just to kind of follow in our footsteps already. And I'm not patting ourselves on the back too much, I am a little bit, because we are doing a lot of things that are neat and innovative and things such as that. But to your point, how much of a stretch is it? That, I guess that's my concern, is if we're already way up here, yes, I'm patting ourselves on the back, we're already way up here, how much more are we going to be able to stretch this versus somebody else, these other districts? Because they're all going to be kind of held to the same standard. Is that my understanding?
Sure. I, I kind of look at this as defined autonomy, whether that be at the school level or the district level in, in reaching these five tenants. And so I think it's great to be enthusiastic that we are, we have already adopted some things that school districts haven't. So it's great for us to partner with other school districts and be highlighted in the example. So for instance, the things that Dr. Dugan shared tonight with social emotional learning. Dr. Yeager's been working on kindergarten readiness, developmentally appropriate practices, some of those things. So I think there is that professional responsibility to really get out there and share those things. But some of the other things, I think it's exciting for buildings, Mrs. Martin mentioned empowering the staff, for us to give them permission to say, let's think differently. If that's a bell schedule, that's integrated subjects, teaching, the, the project-based learning. So a lot of those things, you know, our elementary school may do one way and a secondary school may do another. One of the areas in my mind, as I thought through these, that I think is exciting, that we're starting to talk about, is really that post-secondary completion and attendance. That would be the area in my mind that I think we, we have some room to continue to push ourselves and challenge ourselves, and what does that look like? So last year, we adopted the National Clearing House, where we were already looking at how successful were our graduates after graduation. Now the whole state is doing that, but that's something that we've started. But you know, having those conversations with five high schools and those teachers, that can be a little uncomfortable, because, you know, they're like, well, what do you mean, after graduation? We still want to be looking, is that my responsibility? And we want to say, yes, it is. I mean, our, our vision statement is right behind you, students prepare for their future. So we should be tracking that. I'm looking at things beyond the SAT and the SAT, looking at the work keys, looking at the ASVAB, I'm looking at our CTE programs. We just added seven new 21st Century Academies. So I think that piece is where we can continue to stretch and learn, and I would be thrilled to have the opportunity to interact with the other five or six school districts that are also included in that to get ideas from them. So I really see this as a professional responsibility where we can share some things, but also, you know, we, we do have some areas that I think we can continue to grow as well.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Dane.
All right, thank you.
With that, 5.04, I'd look for a motion.
I move to approve an application submission for Olathe Public Schools for selection as a participant in the Kansas-Can School Redesign Project. Second?
Have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. Whitcliff.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, future action items.
It's like there's going to be a lot of curriculum discussion next month. Moving on for information, written information.
Mr. Allison, can you talk a little bit about 6.02, please?
Yes, I'd, I'd be happy to. The enrollment continues to increase, which, which is a good thing. What's become evident is that the number of students participating in the welding class and being welding at the same time, that our exhaust equipment isn't able to handle as many welders as we'd like to be able to have at, at this point in time. So this would enhance the exhaust equipment and allow us to have more students participating at one time than we're, we're able to do now because of safety issues.
So it's not that what we had there already was not faulty in any way or anything else, just wasn't able to devalue what we're trying to accomplish?
You know, the, the original look and, and when the original system was put in, thinking about how many students would be participating, kind of on the class side while others were, were welding. And as the, the program has grown, and we look at the participation needing more students with access at, during that time period is, is important instructionally. So this will allow us to do that. And, and you're correct, they're not a design flaw or anything like that, it's just as, as our needs have changed, this gives us the, this gives us the ability to add capacity and opportunity for our students, which is important.
Any other questions on future action? All of you had a chance to look at the information and written information? Any board members have any topic for discussion for this evening? Passing off to you, Mr. Allison.
All right, just a couple of comments this evening. First, you all had the opportunity at, at the last meeting to thank Dr. All, and I want to personally thank her. It's a tough position being in interim, I'd been in that position at one point in time, because you're, you're leading, but you're not the leader of the future. And that's a difficult spot to be in, and she did a masterful job. As I worked to transition, once you all had, had made your decision, I can't tell you what an asset she was, how gracious she was to me, and helping me understand the, the culture and the history, and keeping me informed of things as they progressed, which has really allowed me to hit the ground, running with a base knowledge. And special lady, I'm not sure that there's anyone who cares more passionately about this school district than she does, which was very evident. I also know that if, if I screw things up, that she will be there to put me back, back in line. I was told that a couple of times, but she, so I want to, I want to personally have the opportunity to publicly thank her for that. As you said earlier, typically, this would be a, a night where we would be taking a, a more in-depth look at budget. And we're in another peculiar year in the state of Kansas in which we have a new school finance formula, we, we think we have an idea around the budget, but it still has to pass court muster. The Supreme Court will hear the oral arguments on Tuesday. Each side will be given an hour, and then the Supreme Court will, will ask questions. No one really knows how quickly they'll reach a conclusion regarding the finance formula. It could be a week, it could be 10 days. So if you think of the timeline that we're looking at from a budgetary standpoint, as you, as you know, and, and have seen in previous presentations, it's going to make a very, very tight timeline. There's still enough unknowns, it's difficult to be able to, to move forward with the budget through negotiations, a number of pieces that we, we'd be much further down the path than we are now. It's going to require, depending on, on the court decision, quite a bit of action in, in August in a short period of time. By statute, the 25th is when we have to certify that budget with the, the county clerk in order to be able to, to levy the, the taxes. At this point in time, KSDE has not even released the worksheets for Mr. Hutchinson and his staff to begin to, to plug our, our budget in. And it's just, it takes a number of days for them just to get last year's numbers in before we can move forward. So there's, there's going to be a lot of work that, that's going to have to happen. If you think about the, the timeline, we, we may end up being in one of those situations that we've never been in in the state. If the court would find the finance formula to be unconstitutional or inadequate, let's say that's 10 days from next Tuesday, we're now at the end of July, depending on how they would want the remedy, either calling back a special session or giving a deadline after the legislature starts, there's just a lot up in the air. So I just want to make sure that the public understands that's why we're all in a holding pattern, school boards and districts across the state waiting to see what those final decisions will be and, and where we go from there. There, there's a great deal of play, and, and some of those new pieces of that finance formula have a couple million dollar swings in the ability to, to place money, whether it's utilities and capital outlay and, and some other areas that, that would have a definite impact on just the foundational structure of the budget, which is also why we're going to have to wait and, and see how that passes court muster.
And you'll be there next Tuesday to hear?
Be there next Tuesday. There, there are several of us that are going to go up and, and hear the oral arguments, which is, which is always interesting. Having walked out of those in the past, you think based on the Supreme Court Justice questions, you've got a pretty good idea where they're going to land, and you, you never know. So it, it's interesting, also the opportunity to, to hear the state's arguments on why they feel it's, it's adequate, equitable and constitutional. So that, that, that'll be Tuesday. In the past, the earliest the Supreme Court is, has come back with some decisions has been a week to 10 days. So no one really knows, but that's kind of the, the anticipation. And then we'll just have to see how they find. And lastly, just to put some things into perspective, 18 days from today, our new teachers arrive, and in less than 30 days, our students arrive. So a great deal of work that's done in school districts over the summer is, is been given the opportunity in, in visiting some of our school buildings, the construction, the work, the cleaning, it's a very, very busy time in, in schools. And we have, and incredibly have been very impressed, incredibly dedicated staff that's working diligently to get all of that done in a short period of time, to be ready for our staff and our students to return. So just want to commend them on, on their work and how impressed I've been with, with their focus and diligence. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Yes, in just a few weeks, the Class of 2030, our kindergartners will be in class.
My goodness.
So give you something to think about.
You did that math.
Yeah. So executive session, I think we're looking at about 20 minutes, unless any other board member needs to add time to that.
So 7:10?
So yes, 7:10?
Well, I moved that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, consulting with an attorney for the body or agency, discussing matters relating to employer or employee negotiations, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 7:10 PM in this room. Executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, to protect attorney-client privilege, to protect the district's right up to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest.
Second?
Have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Mr. Whitcliff. Sure.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?